Ninth 2017 meeting of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. It's lovely to have a convivial crowd here this evening. We will be led in invocation by Councilor Matthew J. Kelly and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand if you wish.
Most merciful Father, comfort those in pain and bring peace to those in distress. Help us make decisions tonight to benefit the entire Fredericksburg community. Please be with our men and women in uniform, both home and abroad. Bring them home safely to their families and please watch over their families while they're gone. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Officer Hoibl, thank you for being here this evening with us. We have a presentation at this time for the Heart Safe Community Designation. I would like to call on Kevin Dillon, President of the Fredericksburg EMS Council, Lori Knowles, Chairman of the Heart Stroke Committee for our EMS, and Chief Allen, our Fire Chief.
As mentioned, my name is Kevin Dillon and I'm the President of the Rappahannock Emergency Medical Services Council and along with me is Chief Lori Knowles, who's the Chair of our Virginia Heart Safe Community Effort. And it's our pleasure to be here tonight to present the Virginia Designation to the City of Fredericksburg as a Virginia Heart Safe Community. And through the hard work of the team with Chief Allen and the Fredericksburg Fire Department, you all have achieved this status and I want you to know that you're only the third municipal or county or city within the Commonwealth of Virginia to achieve this. And for you all who want to know what this Heart Safe Community means, this is promoting the chain of survival. So it's early access, early CPR, early defibrillation, and early advanced care. And the Fire Department has gone out with their team to make sure that the community is trained in CPR and use of the AED, making sure we have AEDs available in municipal buildings and community buildings and at public safety events. And what that means, the bottom line is, if anybody suffers a cardiac arrest, out of hospital cardiac arrest in the city, their chances of survival are significantly increased. So it gives me a great deal of pleasure to present to you, as the Mayor, your Heart Safe Community Certificate, along with the Heart Safe Community Sign, and you can promote this recognition throughout the city by posting this. So congratulations.
Thank you. We are truly proud and honored to receive this designation and I can tell you, it came as a result of a concerted effort on the part of Chief Allen and his devoted and very capable fire and rescue team, working in conjunction with the emergency medical folks, both at the hospital and throughout the community. Chief Allen, I'm going to let you recognize all the folks who have achieved this.
Thank you, Mayor. Like the Mayor said, there was a lot of people involved in this. And I think if the Mayor thinks about it, about two years ago, one of the people that I want to introduce is Sharon Allen, who is the American Heart Association Training Center Manager for Mary Washington Hospital Healthcare. We talked to the City Manager and then we, Bev Cameron, and then we met with the Mayor and told her what we were looking at and what we wanted to do, and she gave us the full steam ahead to move forward on this. But it was a concentrated effort of all the individuals that you see up here. Like I said, Sharon Allen from Mary Washington Healthcare, Jacob Purcell from Fredericksburg Rescue Squad, and Victor Populinski from the Fredericksburg Fire Department, who brought it to closure, to where that we were able to submit our application for this award. But I would be remiss in not saying, it was an effort of Fredericksburg Fire, Fredericksburg Police Department, Fredericksburg Sheriff's Department, and Fredericksburg Rescue, all of our providers out there that provide the services to the citizens and visitors to the City of Fredericksburg each and every day. So these are the individuals that need the round of applause for their effort in making a heart safe community. And I have one more presentation, if you don't mind, Mayor. Lieutenant Mike Persudo designed a Public Safety Challenge Coin that I would like to present to the individuals that helped us and also to the members of City Council.
Thank you. Oh, it's very handsome. Yeah, I have to hold it up for the count for them. Thank you. Well, let's see it. Not. Has all of our providers on the back. This is truly a great achievement for the city. It really is. And I'm astounded that we're only one of three communities or cities or counties in the state of Virginia. So hooray for Fredericksburg. This is what we do, take care of our citizens. Thank you all. Want a picture? Okay. Let me put that. I have two proclamations to make tonight. We have an important event that's occurring here and occurs all over the nation, Letter Carriers Stampede Hunger Food Drive Day. Whereas every second Saturday in May, letter carriers in more than 10,000 cities and towns across America collect the goodness and compassion of their postal customers who participate in the Letter Carrier Stampede Hunger Food Drive, the largest one-day food drive in the nation. And whereas the Letter Carrier Stampede Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve, since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than 1.5 billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas these letter carriers desire to assist our community by providing a means to obtain food for those who are hungry, and whereas on May 13, 2017, letter carriers will pick up non-perishable food donations left by mailboxes and in post offices and deliver them to local community food banks, pantries, and shelters. And whereas, we also recognize the noteworthy milestone of 25 years that the National Letter Carrier Food Drive celebrates in 2017. Now therefore I, Mary Catherine Greenlaw, Mayor of the City of Fredericksburg, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 13, 2017, as Letter Carrier Food Drive Day, and I ask for an abundance of community participation in this commendable effort. And who do we have here to receive this? Please come forward. Thank you. Thank you. You have lots of goodies. Would you like to introduce your, our group here this evening?
Thank you.
All right. My name is Paula Schinaman. I am the Food Drive Coordinator for the Fredericksburg Branch 685, National Association of Letter Carriers. I also, other counties participate, Spotsylvania, Stafford, all the way down to Colonial Beach. It is a group effort and, but, and it takes, it takes a whole bunch of people to get this thing going.
I'm Robert Gurney. I'm a carrier down here in downtown Fredericksburg. And this food drive is definitely a worthy cause. We get so much food and it's definitely helps out the community a great bunch. And it all goes to the food bank here in Fredericksburg.
I'm Cologne, City Letter Carrier here in Fredericksburg. I just would like to say thank you for having us here tonight, this evening. I also would like to have a big thank you for Paula Schinaman, our Coordinator, because without her, it wouldn't be as big as it is now. She is spectacular in getting this coordinated and it takes a whole lot. And I would like to thank you again.
I'm Joe Choquette. I'm the President of the Union, Local Branch 685, NALC. And thank you, Paula. Thank you, Mayor, for proclaiming the second Saturday, National Food Day, Food Drive. The citizens of Fredericksburg are more generous than any citizens that I have seen. I've worked for a few different post offices and we collect more food in Fredericksburg than a lot of places. We, Fredericksburg leads Virginia as far as cities that collect food. I think last year it was 73,000 pounds.
Eighty, eighty-one thousand pounds.
Eighty-one thousand pounds of food just in this city that was donated. They track that and through Virginia. Fredericksburg is a leader in that category too. So I'd like to say thank you to the citizens, thank you to the Mayor and Paula, the Food Drive Coordinator. And I know again, once again, the citizens of Fredericksburg will do their part.
My name's Jennifer Newbegin. I'm the Manager of Customer Service for the Fredericksburg and Falmouth area. Yes, obviously Paula is doing a fantastic job and has been since she's been on board with us. However, it's not just Paula, it's all of the carriers. They really do a lot of work to make this happen. And again, thank you all for all your contributions and Mayor, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Clarence Mays, Postmaster, Spotsylvania. I too did what everyone else has said, Paula, you do a bang-up job and we really appreciate you being on the team. And I especially think all you letter carriers, because they do this while they're supposed to be delivering mail and receiving mail, but yet and still they find it within themselves to stop and service our communities. And I want to say thank you guys for all the hard work that you guys do in collecting all the food. But Spotsylvania, we will beat Fredericksburg this year. Let it be known.
Well, I thank you all very much. This is a most worthy food drive and, here you go.
And can I say one more thing?
You certainly may.
I passed around blue bags, which Food Lion so kindly don't, oh, sorry, I meant, sorry. Food Lion donated plastic bags for the whole state of Virginia. When we first got plastic bags, we doubled, almost tripled the amount of food collected, which was, is tremendous. So if you get a blue bag, please use it, hang it out on this, on the 13th, this Saturday. And it's simple, just fill it and put it by your mailbox and your carrier will do the rest. And also, last year at the proclamation, I met up with some wonderful people at the Marine Corps Marathon. And we, I called them and we hooked up this year. So it's their 10th year and it's our 25th. And so they graciously gave us a booth at the Marine Corps, the Expo Center. And so we'll be there also. And they also printed up these nice little cards and, so you should get one of these in your mailbox also. And also, we set up a virtual food drive site where anyone can go online and make a contribution, and it is tax deductible, and, which is Fredfood.org. So please visit this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Absolutely. Yep, that's fine. No, this is the best part of that job. Yeah. This is the best part of that job. And absolutely, always, this community, this, it's known for its generosity. I'm always so proud of our community. Thank you so much. This is very exciting times and we do have the 10th anniversary of our Marine Corps Half, and we have Rick Niallis and Angela Anderson here, once again. It's so exciting. Is it here again already? Get your cowbells out. Get your boom boxes out. Make sure you got a locket top on a tape.
Did you say anything about the Jell-O shots?
Well, we, this is streamed. We may have children in the audience. A proclamation, whereas on Sunday, May 21, 2017, the City of Fredericksburg will play, pay tribute to the 10th anniversary of the Marine Corps Historic Half as a premier event annually hosted in this community. And whereas, thousands of runners, spectators, and volunteers from across the United States will join the U.S. Marines and the citizens of Fredericksburg in celebration of the Marine Corps Historic Half Weekend from May 19 through May 21. And whereas, the Marine Corps Historic Half promotes physical fitness and healthy living, offering thousands of participants the opportunity to run three separate distances throughout Fredericksburg's scenic streets and neighborhoods while recognizing the city's historic significance. Now therefore I, Mary Catherine Greenlaw, Mayor of Fredericksburg, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim, Sunday, May 21, 2017, Marine Corps Historic Half Day. And I encourage the citizens of this community to cheer, volunteer, and welcome the thousands of participants and visitors to our city. Further, I urge Fredericksburg citizens to embrace the mission of the Marine Corps Marathon Organization by leading a healthy and active lifestyle, generating community spirit, and by supporting the men and women of the United States Marine Corps in this wonderful endeavor. There you go. Thank you.
The Mayor actually, you know, 10 years of this partnership and I couldn't imagine a better partnership with the City of Fredericksburg. Paula really talked about it. We met the letter carriers last year and it was that community involvement that we wanted to do more for Fredericksburg and, because you give us so much. So we were gladly to partner and a week from now, hopefully we'll add to that contribution of food products. And then tonight with the Healthy Heart, this is the first time in our expo that we will be training our runners in the art of life-saving and CPR. So those 8,000 runners who are out on the course, if something goes wrong, hopefully we'll have people who'll know what to do. So again, it's just our pleasure to be here tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We do have two public hearings. I apologize. Madam Clerk, will you please read Item 5A?
Renewing a lease with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for space on the roof of, and sixth floor of 601 Caroline Street for the operation and telecommunications equipment.
Thank you. I will call upon Ms. Dooley.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will present this on behalf of Mr. Exstrom, who prepared the memorandum and the lease. The proposal tonight is that the city should renew its lease with the company that is now called New Singular Wireless PCS. They operate telecommunications equipment on the roof of the Executive Plaza at 601 Caroline Street. The lease was originally entered into by Theodore Craver, the former owner of the building, in 1996. So when the city purchased the building, we purchased it subject to the 1996 lease. That lease expired last year. The city staff have worked with New Singular Wireless to renew it. I'm very pleased that they were able to adjust the rent upwards by $10,000 per year to bring it more in line with the lease amounts that we receive at the American Tower site at Powhatan Water Tank. The, the business relationship has been very successful with the tenant. They notify us when they're coming on site and their operation of their antenna equipment on the Executive Plaza roof does not interfere with city operations, nor would it interfere with the planned or proposed use of some area of the rooftop in the future for a lookout. And with that, the proposal is that City Council should adopt the ordinance on first reading tonight, subject to any comments we might hear at the public hearing.
Are there any questions for Ms. Dooley? Yes, Council Diva?
I do have a question and I, and I looked through, and this might be an off-the-wall question, but every once in a while it comes up with that building to potentially reduce the height of the building. So I guess I was just curious as to how that would work. It talks about if the building's destroyed, it would have to be restored, but, and I don't know that within 15 days that would be anything that would happen, but I guess I was just curious as to how something like that might play into it.
Ms. Dooley?
Any decision by the city to demolish the Executive Plaza would be subject to the terms of the lease and we would have to negotiate a lease termination with New Singular Wireless.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak to this matter, there is a five-minute limit to your, to your comments. Please approach the podium and give your name and address. Seeing that there's no one here to speak to this matter, we will declare the public hearing closed. What was, what is the will of the council? This is a first read because it is an ordinance.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to first read renewing a lease with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for space on the roof of the sixth floor of 601 Caroline Street for the operation of telecommunications equipment.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read Item 5B?
Amending Article 1 of the Unified Development Ordinance to exempt certain common public and utility structures from the UDO or from the minimum yard requirements, and amending Article 8 of the Unified Development Ordinance to add definitions for these structures. And amending Article 2, Administration of the Unified Development Ordinance, to clarify the authority of the zoning administrator and development administrator to confirm processes to the Code of Virginia and applicable state law, and to make technical changes throughout.
Thank you. Ms. Sherman?
Thank you. City Council adopted the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO, in October 2013. The new ordinance combined the former zoning and subdivision ordinances into one unified city code chapter. Having implemented Articles 1 and 2 for approximately three years, staff recommends certain revisions and refinements of these regulations to the City Council. UDO Article 1 contains general provisions such as applicability and jurisdiction. Article 2 contains the procedural regulations for all of the types of land development permits covered in the UDO, everything from plan development, rezoning applications, defense permits, certificates of appropriateness, to subdivision plat and site plan approval The, the proposed amendments are complex, so I will outline them by article and theme. The only revision proposed for Article 1 clearly states that land development regulations do not apply to public utility facilities such as power poles and streetlights in the right-of-way. The staff report did contain carryover language from an earlier draft regarding wireless service facilities. However, this will be handled in a future standalone text amendment. Article 2 is separated into various themes, goals, and characterized by three main goals and themes. The first is to clarify the duties and authorities of the zoning administrator and the development administrator. Procedurally, when the UDO was created, it listed both bodies for various procedures. That was to provide clarity to the public who might be submitting an application, who it is they talk to, who it is they, they submit their application to. But state code identifies certain zoning permits to be under the purview of the zoning administrator only. And then the subdivision administrator handles subdivision plats and processes. The change in the proposed text amendment clarifies that the zoning administrator is the technical person who is taking action on various zoning permits. But I do want to tell you that procedurally, our process will be the same and, and the zoning administrator and the development administrator will still handle things if you do approve these text amendments, just like we do today. Theme B is to consolidate public notice standards and public hearings and administrative actions, and also to, to provide consistency in our appeal periods. Many of the actions that are listed in the UDO, well, all of them have a certain appeal periods, but some of them, under today's code, have a 10-day, or 15-day appeal period or a 30-day appeal period. Some public comment periods are only 10 days and others are 21 days. These text amendments seek to unify, make all of these time durations uniform. We've selected 21 days for public comment periods and 30 days for appeal periods. One notable change is that we will be extending the appeal period for ARB actions from 14 days, actually, to 30 days. Theme C is an update to the ordinance to reflect changes in the Code of Virginia or to make slight revisions to conform to the Code of Virginia. Throughout Article 2, changes are proposed to reflect the changes again in the Code of Virginia or to make slight revisions to make the ordinance better. For example, the 2015 General Assembly made changes to the definition of variance and to the BZA procedures in public hearing, in hearing variances and appeals. These changes are reflected in the attached draft. Another major topic under this theme is, is the approval process for conditional zoning map revisions. The current zoning ordinance requires a signed proffer amendment to be submitted with a zoning map amendment application. However, the proffer statement is typically revised throughout the review process and requires the applicant to return to landowners for signatures on the revised proffer statements. The proposal is to permit the applicant to submit a proposed proffer statement with the application, but to delay the owner's signature until just prior to the City Council's public hearing, and this change is consistent with state law. The proposed changes also simplify the process when revised proffers at the City Council level materially change the application. Staff also proposes to delete the current 12-month deadline for City Council action on zoning applications to allow the council to have adequate time to fully evaluate complex applications. The revision to re- applications. The revision to review criteria for special use permits also falls within this theme. The current city code examines the impact of proposed special use on adjacent properties, but the Virginia Supreme Court decisions permit the council to consider the impact on neighboring properties or the public, a broader field. The change also encompasses the comprehensive plan review process for public facilities, incorporating state law provisions for administrators to deem public streets and public utility extensions, as features already shown on the comprehensive plan, with certain criteria. And lastly, this was a hot topic with the Planning Commission. The Code of Virginia provides localities only 60 days to act on a proposed subdivision plat, and that's either a preliminary subdivision plat or a final subdivision plat, following the submission of a complete application. With the adoption of the UDO in 2013, specific to preliminary plat applications, the approval authority shifted from the Planning Commission to the City Council and included for public hearings before both bodies. Timing related to the advertising for both public hearings has proven difficult to manage within the permitted timeframe. As a result, staff proposed that there would be no public hearing held prior to the Planning Commission review and recommendation. However, the applicant will continue to mail public notice to the adjacent property owners with the initial submittal of their application. They would be notified again before the public hearing at City Council. The original notice, the initial notice, would advise adjacent property owners that the application is available for review and provides a period of 21 days to offer comment. We would also post a notice on the city's website, offering the opportunity for the general public to review and provide public comment. And staff would include any public comment received with its staff report to the Planning Commission and again to City Council. City Council initiated this text amendment on January 10, 2017. The Planning Commission recommended both ordinances for approval at their meeting on April 12, and staff recommends the adoption of the attached ordinances on first read, with second read being scheduled for May 23, 2017. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the revision for including the, in Article One, including the poles, or excluding the poles from, the power poles from the zoning ordinance, that is something that is put on us by legislature from the state. Is that correct?
Well, the purpose of the Unified Development Ordinance is to mainly regulate what goes on in private property.
Right.
And so this just clarifies that intent and excludes what's in the public right-of-way.
But isn't, didn't Richmond do some things that limits our power for that, or is that the city attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I might try that.
Ms. Dooley?
Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you. The 2017 General Assembly did adopt legislation that provides a framework for local consideration of small cell facilities and distributed antenna systems, which is part of the new rollout of 5G and broadband internet services. And we are still working with that framework. It will require some amendments to the zoning ordinance and the regulations. Those are not incorporated in the ordinance that's before you tonight. What tonight's ordinance would do, the Article One amendments, would say simply that utility poles would be exempt from zoning regulation. That is consistent with our current practice, that the Public Works Department regulates the placement of utility poles and the rights of way, and City Council grants the franchise in the first place. So tonight's amendment is fairly minor and technical, just more of a cleanup amendment to Article One, but you can expect to see additional amendments coming to you in the future for the zoning ordinance. And what we're going to try to do is to balance City Council's goal of encouraging the rollout of broadband in Fredericksburg with the responsible management of the rights of way and the protection of citizens' interests. Is that helpful?
Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you for clarifying that. A couple of other things. I know the vote on the subdivision, I think it was the minor subdivision, which was like five to one. Some people wanted to continue to have the public hearing, or one person wanted to continue to have the public hearing at the Planning Commission, but the timeframe just, it would make it extremely tough to do that, wouldn't it?
For the preliminary subdivision plat, yes. We have run into challenges based on when the applicant drops off their plan and coordinating it with your scheduled meetings and the Planning Commission scheduled meetings. It's very challenging to meet your schedule, the freelance staff's schedule, and the applicant's schedule.
But it doesn't preclude people from coming to comment on it, right?
That's right. They will still, the adjacent neighbors will still be notified as soon, just prior to the application being submitted, that there is something for them to review. We also, again, post the notice on the city's website so that the general public is aware, and then, prior to the City Council's public hearing, that same process would occur.
You know, the public hearings really bother me some. We don't have very much participation at all. It seems that nobody shows up, and then, all of a sudden, when they get the word that things are getting ready to start, they seem to be, and I don't know what the real good answer to that is, but, you know, process for me has always been extremely important. And I sure would hope that we could get ways to get thoughts out and points out and fixes to those things before we spend all the staff's time going through all these processes, writing these ordinances, and all of a sudden, somebody shows up and says, you know, "I don't like that." So that's not your fault. I understand that, but I'm just hopeful that we'll come up with something that will get people involved before staff has spent hours on top of hours trying to get these things right. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Council Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank staff. I know this was quite a process getting all this together and getting it to us for tonight. I do want to thank you for standardizing and extending the appeals process. Hopefully, that will keep us out of problems that we went into recently and keep everybody on the straight and narrow and give us the ability to take action in an appropriate manner in the future on issues that frankly are pretty important to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from Ms. Sherman? This is a public hearing. Is any member of the public here who would like to speak to this matter? All right. Seeing none, we will declare the public hearing closed. This will be back to us for second read on May 23. Thank you. Oh, Ms. Sherman?
Are you going to vote?
We would make a motion.
Oh, we do need to.
Madam Mayor, I move first read.
We didn't do the first read.
First read amending Article One of the Unified Development Ordinance to exempt certain common public and utility structures from the UDO or from the minimum yard requirements, amending Article Eight of the Unified Development Ordinance to add definitions for these structures.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Madam Mayor, I move first read amending Article Two, Administration of the Unified Development Ordinance to clarify the authority of the zoning administrator and development administrator to conform processes to the Code of Virginia and applicable state law, and to make technical changes throughout.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We have no speakers signed up to speak this evening, so we will go to council agenda. Does any council wish to add any item to the council agenda? All right, then I will present item 7A, city branding. We have recently adopted a vision of desired future states for the city with 35 associated priorities. One of those priorities calls for the completion of a gateway improvement study, and before this happens, we really need to support a citywide branding exercise, so that we have a unified use of colors, fonts, designs, signs. Right now, it's helter-skelter, and that would be extremely helpful to us as a city in presenting ourselves. So we have decided to advance this work by creating a subcommittee to work on it. The EDA has appointed Mr. Bob Carter and Mr. Tom Cremmons to the subcommittee, and we would like to have two members of council serve on this initiative. Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilmen Fine and Kelly for this committee.
All right, there's a nomination. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. For Councils Devine and Kelly, thank you for being willing to serve on this. Council Devine?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to point out, one of the things that we talked about in a work session was the different dates that are used for Fredericksburg, and this is a case in point. This is an absolutely beautiful challenge coin, but even in our own chambers, this is 1671, and our seal in front of your desk is 1728. And that is one of the things that we, you know, definitely want to take a look at, is how we define ourselves. And I think it's an important, we talk about tourism and business and everything else. I think we need to be much more clear on how we define ourselves and make sure that the public at large knows that as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure we have any two business cards in the city that look like, much less anything else. So I presume we need to vote on this appointment. So Council Fry?
Just had a question. Do you need an alternate?
We could have an alternate if the others are not able to serve.
Yeah, just asking. I know most of we have, so I mean, I'd be willing to be at least an alternate.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for volunteering that. So if we could, Vice Mayor Withers?
Yes, I would like to nominate Councilman Fry as an alternate to the committee.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Second, if we need a second on that.
Okay. Does that become, can that become part of your original motion? We can make that part of your original motion.
Yeah, I would like it to be.
Okay. All righty then. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Excellent.
Mayor, before we move on, can we do disclosures for the budget and the two school board appointments, so we don't have to disrupt any longer?
That's a very good idea. Before we move on to the consent agenda, we will do disclosures.
Thank you. I'd be glad to start.
Council Davie?
I'd like to make a disclosure regarding item 11B, the recommended operating and capital budget, and 11C, committing an assigned general fund balance for future capital projects and school, capital projects. I want to state that I am an assistant principal for Walker Grant Middle School and the Frederickburg Public School System, and I am able to participate in both of these transactions fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Yeah. Thank you. Council Ellis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For items 11A and 11C, I'd like to state for the record that my spouse is an employee of the Fredericksburg School System, and I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you. Council Fry?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. And for items 11B and 11C, I would also like to read my disclosure. My spouse is a member of a business profession occupation or group of three or more members affected by the transaction. Namely, my spouse is an employee of the Frederickburg Public School System. I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you. All right. Does any council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item nine, we have five sets of minutes before us. The public hearing of April 11, the regular session of April 11, the public hearing of April 18, the public hearing of April 25, and the regular session of April 25. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Council Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and my apologies, Ms. Lacy, for not contacting you earlier today, which I meant to do, but just in the April 18 minutes, I am listed as present and absent. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified. I know.
That's a real trick. We didn't know you were so talented.
That takes talent.
All right. Any other additions or corrections?
So with that change, I would move approval of the five sets of minutes stated as submitted.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
We have a seat on the Quantico Innovation Center and need an appointment to that seat. Vice Mayor Withers?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I would like to appoint, I would like to nominate Mayor Greenlaw to serve on that commission.
Second.
Thank you. I'd be willing to serve if that's the will of the council. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. City manager's agenda, 11A. Ms. Jett?
Good evening.
Budget count?
This is the first of two items for second read relating to the budget. The first is asking council to set, to approve an ordinance setting the new tax rate in conjunction with the 2018 operating budget. A public hearing was held on the proposed tax rate on April 18, and on the first read on April 25, the ordinance was unanimously approved. The ordinance recommends setting a tax rate of 80 cents per $100 of evaluation. This is a three-cent tax increase over the fiscal year 2017, adopted real estate tax rate of 77 cents. Of this increase, two cents will be used for general, city, and school purposes, and the other one cent will be used for the city's stormwater management program. Council may amend the attached ordinance but cannot increase the tax rate above 81 cents without a new advertisement of the rate in an additional public hearing. This tax rate will impact homeowners of, who have a home valued at $100,000. The additional increase per year will be $30. Their tax bill would increase from $770 to $800. For a homeowner with a home valued at $250,000, the increase would be $75. Their tax rate would go from, their tax bill would go from $1,925 to $2,000. The tax rate will generate about $1,185,000 in additional property tax revenue. 790 of this will go to the general fund, and the other $395,000 will go to the city's stormwater management program. Staff recommends approval on second read of the proposed real estate tax rate.
Are there any questions from Ms. Jett?
Madam Mayor, I will have approval of the ordinance on second read, seconding the real estate tax rate at 80 cents per $100 of assessed value of real estate for fiscal year 2018.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Ms. Jett, I will call on you for item 11B.
Okay. Item 11B, again, is the second read, and this is the 2018 operating and capital budget resolution. The first read was unanimously approved on April 25, and the public hearing was held on April 18. Approximately 10 people spoke about the proposed tax rate. Most were in favor. However, one resident did speak against increasing the tax rate. This budget includes the operating funds for the general fund, the enterprise funds, as well as various other funds, such as the school funds, the stormwater management funds, and the city grants funds. It also includes the debt service funds and the capital funds. The budget adjusts fees in the planning department and the building services division, as well as the fire department. The budget also includes a 2% increase in water rates and a 4% increase in sewer rates. We discussed in detail last time the changes from the recommended to the budget that's presented today, but just to briefly highlight some of those changes, the biggest of those were incorporating the findings of the compensation, the classification and compensation study into the budget. We also took some savings and reduced the amount of fund balance we were using. And I'm happy to go over in more detail any of the other changes, but if not, staff recommends approval of the budget on second read. But if not, staff recommends approval of the budget on second read.
Vice Mayor Withers?
I, I just have one question, and I apologize. I should have probably given you a heads up on this. I, I hope you have it available. The way I read this budget, the fund balance for '16 is around a little over 19 million, undesigned it.
Okay.
And at the end of this year, it's going to be around 17. The projected looks to be about 17, and next year down to around 15 after '18. Is that correct? Am I, I, I know those are rounded numbers, but are they somewhere online?
That sounds correct, but I would need to verify.
Yeah. I apologize. I should have called you. I, I read about that. As you know, I had a little incident today in family, and I didn't get a chance to talk to you folks.
Sorry to hear that. We're going to dive into fund balance in item 11C a little bit.
Okay, good, good.
You're correct about the unassigned level of balance. 11C will request designating, or in the old language, the new language, committing some additional unassigned balance to a couple of different purposes. And if that is approved, we're projecting the unassigned balance at the close of fiscal '17 to be about 15.8, 15.8 million.
Okay.
And of course, it's still, I mean, I know it's May, but because of the accrual period, it's still four months to go in fiscal '17, so hopefully a little bit more.
Okay, good. So, so the revenues could, in fact, raise that some.
Yes. We will draw on it, but hopefully not as much.
I, I just bring that up for thought as we look, as we look down the road. We've talked about fund balance, we've talked about capital improvements, but it looks like, in the best case scenario, at the end of '18, our fund balance is going to be probably four to five million less than it was at the end of '16.
The new budget will authorize the use of another 2.7 million total.
Yeah.
And if that comes to pass, then yeah, that'd be about right.
Yeah. And, and again, I bring that up just for thought as we go down the road. Sometime, you know, we, we get involved in these discussions, and we, and we do the things that we need to do, but again, I just, I just throwing it out there. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make trouble. I'm just trying to get everybody to, to think about it as we go forward. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. Any further questions for Ms. Jett? This is the second read.
Mayor, I'll move Resolution 17-34, second read appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2018, beginning July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And speaking of the general fund, item 11C, Mr. Whitley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Good evening. So item 11C is a discussion of our general fund balance. And what this is, is a request before you, a resolution. It only requires one reading. And what it will do is set aside our current unassigned fund balance for two purposes, a piece of them. One is to increase our commitment to future capital projects, which is a commitment that we currently have, by 2.5 million dollars. The second is to create a new commitment for future school capital projects, and we're requesting that we set aside unassigned balance into that in the amount of 1 million dollars. The total fund balance at the close of fiscal '16, which was last year, was 25.7 million dollars. The unassigned portion of that is 19.3 million dollars, and the commitment to future capital projects, which is one of the ones we, we touch on here, is 3.7 million. There's other items on the balance sheet. The biggest one would be, I think, the reservation for the jail stabilization fund, which was, at the time of fiscal '16's closure, was 1.25 million. So then you start adding in things like unspendables and inventories and encumbrances. So that's the difference between the 19 and the 25 million. So in fiscal year '17, which is our current year, we started the year at one level, and then through a series of amendments, the biggest one of which was providing fund balance assistance to the R Board to close those cells that they needed to close, which is, the R Board is, we, we are one half of the R Board. So the current budget authorizes the use of 6 million dollars in fund balance. Our year-to-date results of operations leave us with a projection to use about 3 million of the six. So that's good. It's not as much as we, we were using, although it does use it. So it's, you know, in the past, we've added to fund balance, and last year we used about 2.7 million, of which 1 million went to OPEB, and we set that fund up, the Other Post-Employment Benefits Fund. We're projecting right now about 3 million in fund balance. I do say, even though it's May, you still have the second half of the property tax billings coming in, and then May, June, and then the accrual period for the most important revenue of that would be the sales tax, and that goes into August. And then that gets put back into fiscal '17. So that projection could change, and hopefully it'd be better. But right now, for the purposes of this discussion, we're going to say 3 million. So what those projections show through the cover memo is that of that 6 million, a lot of that was that commitment to the future capital projects fund. So our request before you this evening is to add to that fund, and in the amount of 2.5 million. We, we do strongly recommend doing that because we, we've also used that to help build the '18 budget. And if we do use 3 million, you know, we, we could end up with a situation that we would need to come back to and request again. The second piece of this is a commitment for school capital, and that was in the amount of 1 million dollars. And we've been discussing this for, for a little bit of time, that we could use this to start setting aside funds for, for example, a new elementary school or for other school capital projects that we might need over the next several years. So this is sort of setting aside a new bucket, if you will, on the balance sheet that we can put a little bit into and then draw on as we need. Now, just for deeper background, that would be a total of 3.5 million of fund balance committed from the unassigned balance to these two new, or one new and one old category. Requires one reading. Just for clarity, these funds remain in the general fund. It doesn't represent an appropriation or an authorization for any project. It would be considered a source for future budget actions. Council could add funds to these commitments over the next several years. They also have the authority to pass another resolution and take the commitment off if they needed to, or y'all needed to. What these types of things do, and we've done this, I think, very successfully over the last, over, over the years, is that it does allow us to set aside some cash, to cash fund capital projects that are sort of an in-between nature, not too big, you know, not the size of the, of the new high school or anything like that, but if you need a new roof or a new HVAC unit, you can use cash funding to, to pay for that. Saves on interest and borrowing costs. So it ends up saving money to use cash funding for these capital projects. The final note I would make is that the remaining balance that we're projecting in the unassigned category does meet the policy tests. Both the current policy test of 12 and a half percent, the current policy target, and the one we were proposing when we were looking at revising some of our financial policies, which was 15%. So it meets both of those tests. So you would still have sufficient unassigned balance to meet that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Withers?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Whitley. And I probably should have made, waited until this item to bring that up. And I understand that you're shifting money from unrestricted to restricted, things that we have to do. I, I think my point was just that we're looking at things that we really have to do, and that's why we're putting this money aside. So, so that unrestricted part, that part that we could use for emergency or what have you, is shrinking some. So I'm not trying to alarm anybody. I just, I just, I, I think we, and gosh knows, past management over the, over the time that I've served, has done a wonderful job for the city in, in budgeting and reserve funds. And I'm not one that likes to reserve too much. I'm pretty conservative, so I don't like to take too much money away from taxpayers and stick it in the hole somewhere. But, but at the same time, we have to have a certain amount of money that, and I just like for everybody to think about that. It's just one of the things that I, I worry about. So, thank you. Thank you for your work, and thank you for taking care of the city's money, Mark. You do a great job of it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions? This requires one vote.
Yes, ma'am, one read.
It's a resolution.
And if I could also say thank you, Mr. Withers is very kind. We've got a great team. Some of which are here and some are on the first floor. Also, thanks to this council and prior councils.
And Ms. Jett, and Ms. Jett, you're, you're exactly right. I, I should have also thanked you because I know how hard you work and how much you helped me trying to understand some of this stuff. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I will have approval of the resolution committing unsigned, unassigned general fund balance for the future capital projects and school capital projects.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item 11D is a resolution. I'll call on Ms. Jett for that.
This resolution is a resolution that declares our intent to reimburse ourselves for expenditures that we incur prior to the issuance of bonds. I wanted to point out that this is going to be something we're going to include every year as part of the budget process. This is a pretty standard way most governments, many governments operate. This is also related to the upcoming bond sale that we have in the spring of 2018. And that is, we estimate is going to be 11 million dollars and include projects on the current CIP as well as the Fall Hill Avenue. The reimbursement regulation, the intent to reimburse resolution is required by the U.S. Treasury Department, and this allows us to incur expenses up to 60 days before it's passed, and then once the bonds are issued, to be able to reimburse ourselves for those expenses. As I said, this is something we're going to be including in every budget, but it's also related to the upcoming spring bond sale. We estimate that the debt service payments on the bonds in the spring will be approximately 870,000 dollars per year. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution, which requires one reading.
Any questions for Ms. Jett?
Mayor, I'll move the resolution, item 11D, declaring official intent regarding reimbursement of certain expenditures from proceeds of city obligations.
Is there a second? Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've got a question for the city attorney. Just if you could, before we issue this spring with a new issuance, if you could get back with me, I know that we did something in the past with respect to me being on the city council, voting for bonds, also being in a position as a financial advisor where I could make recommendations for clients to invest in said bonds, and making sure that the appropriate language is, is captured so to avoid any conflict of interest. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And item 11E, again, Ms. Jett?
This is a resolution that we bring before city council every year as part of the budget process, and this is an authorization of the subsidy for the Virginia Railway Express and PRTC. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution, which will use 417,278 dollars for VRE and 36,500 for the PRTC for fiscal year 2018. The motor fuels taxes may be used to support VRE, PRTC, and other transportation purposes. The estimated motor fuels tax revenue for FY 2018 is approximately 1.37 million dollars, and this is an increase of about 45,000 or 3% over the FY '17 estimate. VRE is requesting 417,000 dollars. This is a decrease of 13.7% over the 2017 subsidy level of 484,000 dollars. VRE kept their overall jurisdictional level, subsidies level at 17.25 million. The reduction in the city's share reflects a decrease in the overall, city's overall share of ridership. The total VRE budget for 2018 is 134, 133.4 million. VRE's operating portion is approximately 85 million, which is an increase of 2.5 million. PRTC subsidy for 2018 is 36,500, and this is a 500 or 1.5% increase over FY '17. So this resolution would authorize the use of 453,778 dollars in motor fuels taxes for VRE and PRTC, and staff recommends approval.
Councilor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few points on this, and then what we're looking at coming down the road. What this is, it's pretty standard VRE. The funding formula is alternating years, 3% increase to jurisdictions, and 3% increase in the, to the, to the riders. VRE completed their 2040 long-range plan, and with that, we also did a complete financial review of the operations at VRE, looking at current levels, expanded levels, much increased At the same time all this is going on, two things have happened, and then I'm going to give you what the final scenario is. Because the General Assembly and their infinite wisdom, acknowledging that they forgot to give us a gas tax floor, we have taken some significant hits in the level of funding we get, and that is something that really needs to top our legislative agenda in pushing for a floor of some form in, in the next session. Reason I bring that up is DRPT, Department of Rail and Public Transportation, who handles a lot of the funding on the transit side of things, to give you an example of where we're at, has already sent an email, setting up a special task force to start meeting with transit organizations on the understanding that funding for transit is going down, and that these organizations are going to have to find new funding sources outside their normal funding sources to keep operating. To give you an idea, a transit system in Northern Virginia, which everybody would say is critical, and we are talking about expanding transit here, is basically bleeding about 9 to 9.5 million dollars a year, and that number's going up. And if, and that has to come from local dollars now. If, if we didn't have Prince William County kind of stepping up to the plate, we're looking at a minimal reduction of service in Northern Virginia of 35%. If you look at VRE continuing on at the current level of service with 3%, 3% alternating, VRE goes bankrupt to 2032 with the rate of costs and expenditures. This is going to start becoming more and more of an issue to us and the use of our gas tax funds over the years. And I want you to know, and, and Mr. Withers is with me, we do keep pointing out to our colleagues who are Fairfax County, Prince William County, that while, you know, it doesn't seem to be a big issue for them, you know, we do use these gas tax funds for a lot of projects in the city. While we got a little bit of a break this year, basically because of, we're kind of laying off the localities this year, it will come back to us next year. And if what we're hearing from DRPT is correct, this amount that we're going to have to start paying for VRE is going to continue going up, and it's going to be a discussion we're going to need to have, because we have had plans for continuing using our gas tax funds for other projects within the city, and that is going to get harder and harder to do based on that issue of lack of funding. But two, with no gas tax floor, again, we've, we've lost some significant money. But just want to give you a quick heads up on that. But I will go ahead and move to authorize the use of 417,278 motor fuels taxes for the Virginia Railway Express and 36,500 for the Potomac and Rappahannock Transportation Commission for fiscal year 2018.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item 11F is House City Manager's update. Mr. Barudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot going on in the city these days, so I'll just highlight a couple issues, or recent events. I do want to thank the mayor and the Parks and Rec Department and the police department. They recently joined, several gentlemen who were actually walking for a cause. The cause is Wounded Walk, and it's to support veterans who unfortunately find themselves ending their lives. So we do appreciate their attention to that cause, and we certainly So we do appreciate their attention to that cause, and we certainly appreciate the fact that they stopped in the city of Fredericksburg. They were escorted from, basically Eagle Village, by some of our police department and other employees, all the way to the Falmouth Bridge, and picked up the walk northward from there. Also want to thank the Department of Social Services for raising awareness of Safe Sleep Campaign. They were joined by the Sheriff's Department, recently raising money for that important cause to work to prevent infant fatalities in our community. I'd also highlight the fact that the police department's annual report is now online. It is complete, so please review it on the city's website. There's a link, of course, directly to the, again, 2016 police annual report. Also highlight the fact that the farmer's market is now open in its high season. It did open April 15th with 33 vendors. Obviously, a great downtown venue at Hurham Park is now in full swing, so we encourage folks to participate at Hurham Park and enjoy some fresh vegetables. We also want to highlight the fact that picnic in the park is now open. They did begin the picnics in the park, May 2nd. That'll carry on through the remainder of the summer, Tuesdays, 11:30 to 1:30, except for May 30th. So please join us Tuesdays, again, lunchtime through now, through the end of the year. Also, I'm sorry, end of the summer. Also do have the calendar in your package. Be happy to answer any questions, Madam Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Baruti? Well, if there's nothing more to come before this party, we are adjourned.